Six thirty, Monday, August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty. This is a Carney Board of Aldermen meeting. I'll call the meeting to order. Shirley, have you had a chance to take role?
I have taken role. Everybody's present, and you have a quorum.
Thank you. Let's stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll move to the consent agenda. Board, you see the consent agenda. Any questions or discussion on the items placed on the consent agenda this evening? If there are no questions or discussions, can we entertain a motion to pass the consent agenda?
I make the motion.
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
All abstain.
One abstention from Alderman Lehman. We'll show the consent agenda passed. Next, we'll go to mayor's remarks. I have no remarks to make this evening, and we'll move next to the administrator's report.
Mr. Mayor, I want to remind everyone that due to the Labor Day holiday, our next meeting will be September the eighth on a Tuesday. Normal time is six thirty. Mr. Mayor, you asked me at the last board meeting to follow up and give a kind of a guidance on what we should be doing with the Lions Park project. And I have invited Steve Casey back to speak to you on behalf of that, based on the comments that were received, especially with the bandstand. There's enclosed in the agenda is an email from Steve and a letter from Larry Reynolds that recommends the board accept the plans as submitted and proceed to bid. And due to the potential inflationary impacts, obtaining bids sooner rather than later is important. And if I could recognize, have you recognized Steve Casey? He's with us now.
Yes, Steve, I would be happy to give you the floor and let you make your presentation or discussion that you may have.
Thank you, Mayor. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mayor Pogue, Board of Aldermen, Jim, Eric, Ryan. My name is Steve Casey. I'm with SC Planning and Design. I'm the project manager for the Lions Park renovation project. I could just make a few comments here regarding the project as a whole and glad to turn it over to Eric and Ryan for any additional comments. First, I'd like to say I've been fortunate to work on this project. I'm very appreciative to the staff and mayor entrusting me to manage the project. I'm very enthusiastic about it and passionate about the project. I think we've got a very, very good plan. We've been working on this project diligently for about two years now. Our project team, I believe, has really asked the right questions. I think we've explored a lot of different concepts. I think we brought in the right consultants to assist us with the deliver, the delivery of the project. I really feel like it's a great design, and I think it's budget conscious. I think it also is respectful of the heritage and the history of the park as it relates to the Lions Club. I think some of this we touched on two weeks ago, so I won't go into a lot of detail there. But I think it hits on all of the key components that make for good park design. We were awarded last year a $250,000 grant from the state of Missouri for land and water conservation funds. This is, this goes to communities and agencies for park development projects. These are highly competitive state grants. The DNR, for obvious, I think for good reason, felt like this was a very good project, and it was much needed. I think only a handful of projects every year are awarded these grants. So from that standpoint, I think it met the criteria that would qualify for grant funds. I've been a park planner for probably about twenty-five years now. I see what first, I see firsthand what good quality, safe park projects do for a community. I think they increase indirectly. I think they, they can bolster economic development. They can increase property values. I think they improve the quality of life. I believe this project is a good representation of that. I think it's a good example of that. The splash pad is a central component of this project. I think it will bring in much-needed free aquatic play for the community. I think also, I think just generally just going to make a lot of kids and families very happy with its addition to the park. I work for the city of Lee's Summit. I've seen what splash pads do firsthand. We've, we built our first one back in 2015, and I, they're extremely popular, particularly for, for just expanding aquatics play to neighborhoods and areas of the community. So very popular, very trendy amenity and park design. I think our park, I think our playground layout is well thought out. I think there's a lot of variety and play value. We will be meeting tomorrow with a playground consultant to iron out some of the final details. I think there were some suggestions and recommendations from the board at a previous meeting, and I think those are very good, and we're taking those into consideration in our continued discussion with the playground consultant. I think the shelters will be a good draw. I think that'll be great for family gatherings and functions. The amphitheater band show, I'll talk about that for a minute. I think this will be a nice addition. I think it fits the character of the park very well. And the other, and the other, the other elements of the design, I think when you look at sort of the components, you want to, from an architectural standpoint, I think you want to be consistent. And I think the design that we proposed here not only is, fits the character of the site, but the character of the vision for the project, but it's also cost-effective. And it allows for flexibility also with smaller performances. And if I could touch on this for a minute, too. I've been part of a, an amphitheater project in Lee's Summit, a very large amphitheater project here in the last couple of years. And I'll say that it's, it was a challenging process to go through because you want to satisfy all of the user groups. But in all reality, it's really very difficult to do that unless you've got an unlimited budget. So you try to find some middle ground. I think you obviously have a very well-known performance venue currently with the Carney Amphitheater. And I know this because when we were doing our design and in our planning stage, we actually visited Carney. And so you've got a very recognizable venue already in one of your parks. And, but I can see this, I can see a smaller shelter that's designed with flexibility to be a nice venue for smaller performances at Lions. One other thing I want to touch on, too, is I think times of the essence here with this project. I think it's probably about the right time to move ahead with the project. And as I've outlined the schedule, this will allow you to get the park and splash pad potentially open next summer. We need to get the project out on the street for bids, probably within the next thirty days, so we can meet a schedule that hits those target dates and get some, get a contract, get under contract with the playground installer, the splash pad installer, get a general contractor in line, start construction in October, as I mentioned, with completion sometime in May or June of 2021. Right now, it's a little tough to gauge the industry with the pandemic, short and long term, with the bid environment. I will say this, we will want to create a competitive bid environment. The more bidders, the better opportunity there is for not just lower, lower bids, but qualified bids. And another point I want to make, too, is that we have, through the process, I think we've, we've been able to manage a good portion of this project from a cost standpoint by going through the RFP bid process with the splash pad and the playground with not to exceed budgets. And we also have very good cost information pertaining to the restrooms, shelters, and the band shell. So I feel good about where our estimates are from the consultant at this point as it relates to the other aspects of the project. And I think they're very consistent with the market trends and industry trends for this, for this part of the country. So with those points, I would turn it back over to Eric and Ryan if they've got any additional comments, or I'm, I'm happy to field any questions as well.
Thank you, Steve. Eric, Ryan, do we have any additional comments from staff?
Just to reiterate what, what Steve said is, I think he touched, touched on it well with the band, the band shell. We're not going to make every single person, every group happy with each amenity that we have. But that, we don't have another theater group in Lions Park anymore as Jim Luskey will be conducting his theater in the park at Jesse James Park. I feel, and I, I know Ryan does, too, that the, the small performances with the music in the park in the evening times, I think that is going to work outstanding for those people and provide a, a nice open air so people can see through the band shell to see what's going on, that performers are performing on that stage. So I like the, I like how everything has come together within the last two years, and I'm proud of this project as of right now.
Yes, and Mr. Mayor, with that, we deal with the financing piece. I have Todd Goffey from Piper Sandler, Sandler on, and we've been anticipating borrowing $1 million with an expectation that the enrichment council was going to bring $350,000 at some point into the project. They've raised approximately $30,000. I don't know that it's possible that they'll achieve their goal. And so we've got to be preparing our debt schedules based on the funding for the whole amount, and that's included, included in the agenda packet. There might be some grant consequences to that as well. Steve might be able to talk to that, but, but we, we do recognize the need to move forward. We also have a, there's also a glitch with the, the property deed. Has a, has a dedication that says the property will be used for park purposes forever, which is exactly what we all intend to do. But when we're going to use the land for collateralizing a loan, that doesn't need to be there. So I'm going to have to go to the park, the Lions Club, and ask them for a release of that, of that restriction. And I'm hopeful that they'll give it, that to me on August the twenty-seventh. So enclosed is a, is a cash flow schedule that combines the city's other leases that, when retired, the Lions Park would assume, the project would assume those revenue streams. So we see in that cash flow schedule a, that, a kind of a smoothing that, that we, we think it's affordable, the way we've got it financed. So with that said, we would join with Steve Casey in recommending that the project be put to bid. We, we are on a tight budget. We understand that. But we're at a point where either we put it on the shelf and let inflation keep on working on it, or we at least see if, see if what we've got will fly or not.
As it is.
So that's, that's where we're at. And of course, you know, the, you, you guys know what's going on in the world of COVID. So, you know, that's, it's a, it's a big decision for you all to make. I understand. But we think if we can bring back bids, that's when you'll make those decisions. Those hard decisions will come when you, when you see actually, you know, what, what have you got?
All right. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Eric.
And Mr. Mayor, I, I did, I did ask Todd Goffey to join us, and I didn't know if he had any remarks he might want to make, Todd?
No, I'd be glad to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Any questions or discussion from the board?
So if I, if I hear this right, the, the band's going to stay circular. Is that correct, bandstand?
Yes, that's the, that's what is in the design currently. It's a, it's a half, half-circle design with a, a canted roof. So it's, it's sort of higher in the front of this, front of the stage and slopes off to the back, but it's a half circle or a kind of a half hexagon. You want to look at it or consider it that way?
Well, two weeks ago, we talked about making it rectangular, and you're saying that we can't do that?
The plans were 100% final. I mean, we, we had, we had presented, and I can take this if you let me share the agenda. I can take you to, back on January, we actually presented a...
It's that same structure that was on the, yeah?
This is the same structure that was presented back in January. And we, we had released...
We could, we could look at the bandstand because we didn't know if we had the money to do it. Now that we got it, we talked about last week that it was round, and we kind of wanted to make it rectangular. But what you're saying is we, we can't do that. So what I'm hearing...
Well, we, we had hired our engineers to draw plans, and that's what we, we, we did that on a timetable to try to get, there was a goal earlier, right on the year, that we were, that time was of the essence. And we let our, we let our folks go with, and make, and they made decisions on what was presented at the public hearing.
Well, I sure got the feeling two weeks ago that this was something that we could look at changing, and now I'm, I'm being told that, that, oh, no, we got to go with this.
Well, it's, 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 if we change the plans, we're going to have to, as explained in the letter from Larry Reynolds, they're going to be expect, they're going to have to tear up in the plans and re, and, and redo them, which wasn't part of their contract. So, you know, you know, it's a matter of, shall you go with what you got? And, or...
What, what organizations currently use that? And Eric, Ryan, did you say that the theater in the park's no longer going to be at Lions Park?
Mr. Mayor, we support one theater group now. Jim Luskey's group, naturally, the COVID this year put a halt to that. But he will be using the Carney Amphitheater to have his theater in the park performances.
What, what was the, and Eric, I'm sorry to interrupt. I forgive her, forget her name, and I'm sorry for that. But there was a lady that visited us the last couple of years from the Turnbull area that had a theater group.
Linda Taylor.
Yes, that's it.
Was her name.
That group's dissolved. They've disincorporated.
Okay, so they're really just true, only the one theater group?
There is no theater in the park group at all if you, if you consider Jim has withdrawn from, from his plan. And, you know, hopefully he'll return, but we'll see how that goes.
I believe that the band uses it, too. Not our high school band, but some of the smaller bands. For example, Dan's wife is in one, and they've been out there. Trying to think. I've seen a variety out there.
Right.
But, yeah.
Jerry, I, I think the, the music in the park that we, we help sponsor, that Debbie Holt lines up the, the different acts there, I think that shell that we, that is shown is going to be absolutely perfect for that. I anticipate a lot of weddings in, in Lions Park once the renovation is done and using that, that little stage there as people get married in the park. We have them getting married in the park at the pond shelter at, at Jesse James Park. I think this is going to be way more attractive to people that want to have weddings in a park to use that facility. I like the facility, as I stated earlier, and I think the, the bandstand, bandshell is perfect venue for that, for Lions Park. I really do.
Hey, Eric, did you get the, is there power out there for that bandstand? Are we keeping power out there?
Absolutely.
So they'll be able to, and that's where, and thanks for all that, because I, I'm, I was just trying to understand what organizations would be using it or we, we know for sure?
Well, they do movies in the park with the firehouse, too.
Yeah, I, I was just, and especially if there's electricity there, then we could project from speakers as well. Um, I... Sounds good.
I'm inclined to, to defer to the people who are dealing with the parks. If Eric is happy and Ryan is happy with the way that it has been designed, and they've certainly sat through a bunch of meetings to make that happen. I'm not really worried about the sound for this, for the thing because with power, most bands, if they're very small, are going to bring speakers and things like that so that the pushing out sound isn't going to be an issue. The nice thing about having it all open is that there's a breeze up there. I don't know if you've ever been on that bandstand when there's, when there's several people and no, you know, there's, that blocks so much breeze. So if you're up there performing, having the nice air come through there is actually a benefit. So I, I'd still be in favor of going ahead with it.
I appreciate that input. I, I concur. I, I look back and it's the same, they essentially picked the same shelter that's been in our, you know, our public open house. I know, you know, I was there. I think Jerry was there. It's been the same image on our park board scene. I'd hate to spend more time and money to make any changes, but then also if, if there's, you know, a need, then now's the time, though, to consider that.
I think the planners, Larry Reynolds, and, and his letters, he carefully explains that, you know, if we can get out for bid, then we'll find out where we are in the budget. And, you know, he's, I...
Until we get to that point, we may not be able to afford any of it, right?
We may not be able to afford anything.
Yeah.
I think it's a great addition for the, for this area of town. I mean, you know, I've, I've got family that lives right next to the park, and, you know, she's, she's thrilled to death to see the renovation of the park. And surprisingly, she's, she's thrilled to see the possibility of a splash pad. You know, we've seen through social media, we've seen a lot of people that talk about a splash pad or something for their kids to do. And I think this brings the possibility of, you know, of some, something for kids to do, a splash pad in, in a park that by design looks great. And I'm glad to see the existing equipment's going to be used at another park because that was a, a local young man's eagle project. So it would be good to see it used somewhere else. So I think it's a great addition.
Any other questions or discussion from the board? Jim, do you need a, a motion to put it out to bid, or what are you speaking?
It would be useful to have either unanimous consent or some direction from the board on how to proceed, yes. So a, a motion to authorize us to proceed to bid is, is welcome.
We'll make a motion that we put this out to bid to get numbers back.
Second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That concludes my report.
All right, we have no public requests or petitions. We do have two public hearings scheduled for this evening.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. A public hearing has been scheduled to consider the 2020 property tax levy and closed our forms submitted to the state auditor that have the same levy as we had last year, which is 55.15 cents, that's how I prefer to call it, and for a general fund. And general obligation bonds is five cents for a total of 60.15 cents. The levy is calculated to remain the same using those final assessed numbers that, that came from Platte County on August the 11th. And we have also, also those, forms are enclosed in the agenda packet for the public's view and, or your, your view. And so a public hearing should be open for considering the, um, public, the property taxes. And we have a proposed ordinance that we've asked that we consider after the conclusion of the hearing.
All right. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comments or input. If you have any, if you are opposed or for the proposed 2020 property tax levy, we'll have you state your name and address for the record. Call the floor open. I know we have some viewers online. I'll give them a few seconds to raise their hand. Seeing no movement, we will close the floor for public comment and input. Any discussion or questions from the board? If so, if we could read by title only, please?
It'll be on two readings. First reading, ordinance fixing the rate of tax levy on all taxable property within the city of Carney, Missouri for the year 2020 pursuant to state statute RSMO 67.110.
Make a motion to approve as read?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please?
An ordinance fixing the rate of tax levy on all taxable property within the city of Carney, Missouri for the year 2020 pursuant to state statute RSMO 67.110.
Second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Pull the board.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
The vote's unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
And how about 6B?
Mr. Mayor, and we have a hearing scheduled for a vacation of the street right of way. Dan Sanders of Mako Development is present with us at Oakwood for the Oakwood Senior Apartments project. They propose to vacate a portion of Clark Street and Alma, both previously unopened and undeveloped street right of ways that were planted in the early 1960s as a county subdivision. Enclosed in 6B is the staff report prepared by David Pavlich, who may have additional comments. And of course, our TMZ liaison, Kathy Barker, may have some comments as well. So if you recognize David Pavlich, and see if he has any report on that.
Any report from staff?
Well, not really a report, but I do have some comments. Want to, want to stress that, that part of the right of way that is to be vacated is for streets that were never constructed. Also, that part of North Clark to be vacated is only that portion that has the Mako Development project on both sides. This will not affect areas a little bit to the south where there are separate property owners on the west side of that road right of way. As part of the review process, we contacted all the utility companies that serve the area. Other than the city with a sewer force main, no other utilities are located in those corridors. They did, however, ask that we request to retain some easement rights through those right of ways, which we are doing and will be dedicated as part of a final plat that will come up later tonight. Thanks.
Kathy, do you have anything from planning and designing?
I don't. It was very easy.
Okay. At this time, we will open the floor for any public comment or input. If you are for or against this proposed business, we'll have you move forward and state your name and address for the record. Call the floor open for public comment.
Can you all hear me? This is Jesse Stevens with Crockett Engineering.
Uh, we're, um, we're located at Thousand West and iPhone, uh, Columbia, Missouri. And, uh, I echo everything that David said. It was fairly straightforward. We're retaining all the necessary utility easements that would've gone along, uh, with, with, where that right of way is being given up, um, uh, that, that anybody could need. And, um, I'm available for questions if needed, so.
Thank you, Jesse.
Mr. Mayor? Uh, I'm Dan Sanders with Mako Development. Can you, can you guys hear me tonight? Last week with TMZ, I had some technical difficulties, but, uh... Uh, now, we're, uh, moving forward. I think this is the last piece. We're, uh, very close to being able to close, uh, hopefully next week or no later than the thirty-first. It's the COVID delays with all, everybody working remote, MHDC is still working remote, their attorney and, and all the closing process has been slowed like, like a lot of things that we're dealing with right now. But, um, we're, we're very close to, to being at that point. So hopefully with this piece, uh, tonight, uh, it'll allow us to move forward and, uh, we can close and be under construction in September.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? I see nobody move. Close the floor for public comment input. Any questions, discussions from the board?
Uh, the only thing I'd add is I've dealt with Dan and Jesse on, on two different occasions in another municipality on projects very similar to this. And, uh, these, these guys are, are top-notch, uh, people. Um, when I, when I dealt with them before, we had some, some issues with some of the plans. And, uh, they were, they were very, very, one of the easiest people to work with, uh, as far as, uh, right of ways, uh, as far as the buildings, um, these, these guys are top-notch. So it's good to see them back here, so.
Thank you for that. All right, if there's no other questions or discussion, uh, if you could read, uh, the proposed ordinance by title only, please?
An ordinance vacating Alma Street and the north two hundred and feet, two hundred and eight feet of North Clark Street.
Make a motion to approve as read?
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Second reading, please?
An ordinance vacating Alma Street and the north two hundred and eight feet, north, uh, feet of Nor, North Clark Street.
Second. I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Pull the board.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
The vote's unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, we'll move on to old business.
And Mr. Mayor, this, uh, this is an item of business, uh, directly related to the Dan Sanders, um, Oakwood Senior Apartments. Am I saying that right, David? Or is it Oakwood Ridge?
Oak Ridge.
Did I have it, the gender wrong?
Uh, yes, Oak Ridge Estates is the name of the final plat. Oak Ridge Estates.
Oak Ridge Estates. Yeah, that's correct on my note in, in the next page. So, uh, they are seeking approval of the final plat of Oak Ridge Senior Estates, for which the city ha, uh, has approved a R three P zoning plan, uh, based on ordinance number thirteen forty-eight twenty seventeen for a forty-four unit single, or senior housing development. The single plat lot is a five point eight acre tract located on North Clark Street, behind Dollar General and south of the senior center. And, uh, the staff report is enclosed. Uh, David may have additional comments. At their August the tenth board meeting, the planning, uh, the commission meeting, the planning and zoning commission voted unanimously five to zero to recommend approval of the plat. And, uh, it is recommended that the board consider the enclosed final plat ordinance in seven A.
Uh, staff, David, do you have any comments?
Sure, I'd like to add that, um, this final plat, they establish, uh, property lines, right of ways and easements. So you'd see, if you looked pretty close, uh, on the drawing, you'll see that the utility easements are being granted in the areas that we're vacating, North Clark and Alma Street. Um, also, this is a final plat. It does not change the development plan in any way. It only establishes those easements and property lines.
Kathy, do you have anything to add from planning and zoning?
I don't.
Okay. Any questions or discussion from the board? If there's no questions or discussion from the board, if you could read the proposed ordinance, Jim, by title only, please?
An ordinance approving the final plat of Oak Ridge Estates, a subdivision in Carney, Missouri, and accepting dedication of right of way and easement thereon.
Move it that way. First, the ordinance is read and played.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading, please?
An ordinance approving the final plat of Oak Ridge Estates, a subdivision in Carney, Missouri, and accepting dedication of right of way and easement thereon.
Second.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Pull the board, please?
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
Vote's unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sanders, congratulations. And, uh, once again, we're, we're happy to welcome you back to Carney.
Well, thank you very much. We sure appreciate it.
All right, we'll move on to new business.
Mr. Mayor, enclosed in, uh, eight A of the, uh, agenda is, uh, the proposed ordinance that we've been adopting every since nineteen ninety-one, uh, which limits the, uh, the number of folks who have to file, uh, with the, uh, with the, uh, Missouri Ethics Commission. It limits it to the mayor, uh, and the purchasing agent, which is me. And any, anybody, uh, any alderman who has an expenditure, uh, in the lump sum of five hundred or more dollars with the city that's outside of reimbursements and outside of, of, uh, their normal, uh, alderman pay. Uh, or, uh, if, if, uh, if there's greater than five thousand dollars. And, uh, although this is supposed to be adopted biannually, the Missouri Municipal League has always recommended that we do it every year just in case there's a change in personnel. Somebody forgets and screws up and doesn't get it passed. And then, then, uh, we have to do it. Uh, which would, which would, uh, and the, the owner's thing is it goes every city official, park board, planning and zoning. Uh, you know, it's, it's, uh, it's everybody. So, uh, we do recommend approval of the ordinance as in, uh, been enclosed in eight A.
Questions, discussion from the board? If not, if you could read the proposed ordinance by title only, please?
An ordinance of the city of Carney, Missouri to establish a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal officials.
We approve the ordinance as read?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
And an ordinance of the city of Carney, Missouri, uh, to establish a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal officials.
Make a motion to approve on second reading?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
Vote's unanimous, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. Mayor, uh, item, uh, item eight B, uh, is a proposed ordinance amending the fireworks regulations. Uh, we, uh, discovered that we had a very antiquated definition of our, of our, uh, what we call fireworks. And that, uh, it created some loopholes we didn't, didn't appreciate having. And so, uh, we do recommend that, uh, that we, uh, update that ordinance. And enclosed in eight B is, is the, uh, an amendment that was prepared by our, uh, city attorney. And, uh, it, it simply allows the board to continue to regulate fireworks as they always have.
Any questions or discussion from the board? If there are no questions or discussion from the board, if you could read the proposed ordinance by title only, please?
An ordinance amending section two ten point twenty-two ten of the city code of Carney relative to the sale and use of fireworks.
Make a motion to approve?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading, please, by title only?
An ordinance amending section two ten point twenty-two ten of the city code of Carney relative to the sale and use of fireworks.
Make a motion to approve on second reading?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Pull the board, please?
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
Vote's unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, we'll move on to alderman discussion. Alderman Spencer?
Um, in regards to item C three on the consent agenda, I would like to express the city's thanks to the following people that, uh, were part of it. And that is, I put them alphabetical. Stacy Bratcher, Connie Crawford, Jim Eldridge, Jennifer Grasso, Kirk Hamilton, Jenny Hayes, Daryl McCrone, David Pavlich, Shawna Searcy, Linda Shilt, myself, Lacy Staub, and Marie Steiner. I'd like to express our thanks for helping to design a new, simple, sophisticated, and very versatile logo slash brand for multiple uses for the city of Carney. Whether you only attended one or two meetings or were involved for the whole past two years, we appreciate their input. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you. And, uh, I echo your appreciation to all those individuals. Alderman Holt?
I'm good.
All right. Alderman Lehman?
Uh, just wanted to say that the reason I abstained was there's reimbursement on the bills. Uh, so rather than create any kind of conflict or anything, that's reason for my abstaining on the consent agenda. Uh, the only other thing is, is it's, it's great to see us move forward on the park. Uh, it's, it's, it'd be a great addition to the town and, and bring people downtown so that, uh, maybe we can, uh, get some more things happening downtown. Uh, so it'd be good to see the community come back downtown, uh, so we can liven up downtown. So it's good to see.
I agree.
It's been a exciting project for, uh, not to speak for all of us that have been involved with it, but a lot of us have been involved with it for two years and to get to this point is exciting.
Definitely.
Thank you. Alderman Barker?
I would just, um, say that I agree with Alderman Lehman and I'm excited about seeing this project go forward. It's something that we've needed for a long time.
I, I appreciate the, the board's continued support on that, uh, redevelopment. And, uh, fingers crossed, we have a good news report once bids come in and we can continue to push forward. All right, with that, do we have a motion adjourned?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Everybody have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.